All right. Good evening and welcome to the December 16th meeting of the Wayzata Planning Commission. I call a commission to order. Unfortunately Chair Stockton is unable to attend this evening. My name is Chris Planton. I am the vice chair and so I will try to fill her shoes for tonight. Next, I'd like to read the information for our hybrid meeting for those who care to join remotely. You can join by meeting number ID is 814-2288-7154 and the passcode is 514894. Members of the public may attend this planning commission meeting in person or watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8 WCTV and at the city's website www.yazata.org/wctv. Public comments during the public forum and/or the public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person at the meeting in advance or by logging into the Zoom call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you'll be seen and heard in our council chambers and on the cable channel. You'll be asked to unmute and then you may begin your comment. All public comments must include your full name and address. Next Planner Quarles, would you like to please call the roll?
Absolutely. Commissioner Elg?
Here.
Commissioner Schwabey?
Here.
Commissioner Planton?
Here.
Commissioner Cameron?
Present.
And please note that Commissioners Severson and Stockton are absent.
All right, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the approval for our agenda this evening. Are there any updates or discussion on the agenda? Okay, if none, I'd ask for motion for approval.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Please note that the agenda has been approved. Next is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes of November 18th, 2024. Again, are there any questions for staff or other commissioners? All right. If none, I'd ask for a motion of approval.
So moved. Cameron.
Second. Schwabey.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. That brings us to our public hearing items on our agenda. The first is 5A, which is considering a zoning text amendment for Chapter 909, our design standards. And Planner Quarles, would you like to walk us through this portion?
I can. And I probably should have brought this up during the agenda approval, but it might make sense to switch these two items since we have a couple of people in the audience.
All right.
So.
Move to 5B, considering the zoning text amendment for Chapters 955, R3A District, and 920 Parking.
Sounds good. And that's on me. I could have organized our agenda a little bit better. So, this will be a somewhat short presentation with a lot of discussion based on a fairly long engagement process over the last couple of months. So consider these slides a high-level summary that we can dig into any part of. So the chapters that we're discussing amending today are Chapters 955, which is the R3A Single Family District, and 920, which is Parking and Loading. And both of these are for zoning text amendments. For a little bit of background, over the summer, staff heard concerns from the City Council about the fast pace and character of single-family redevelopment in the core neighborhoods over the summer. This was generally in the areas north of Wayzata Boulevard and south of Highway 12, hemmed in by sort of Benton and Berry in general. There was a council workshop held on September 17th to sort of preliminarily discuss the issue. At that workshop, staff was directed to prepare a moratorium on redevelopment within that specifically bounded area for the council's consideration. The council considered it in October and the moratorium did not pass. So there was no stoppage on development over this fall. Through that process, council directed staff to continue working on the issue and actually expand the scope of the study to all of R3A, which is everything in orange on the map there on the slide. On October 21st, staff brought forward 10 potential changes to the planning commission. These are zoning solutions that could possibly address some of the concerns that residents were bringing up. These were not all necessarily ones that we knew were going to move forward, but they were ones that we wanted to make sure that we got in front of planning commission. After that, we opened up a visual preference survey online for the community for about two weeks in November. We got 87 responses on that, which was blew me away. I was very surprised but very heartened to see the volume of responses, the detail that people put into their responses. It was extremely helpful to us when considering what zoning solution should move forward. That went out to all R3A residents, both in the Wayzata Weekly. So there are a couple of residents who took the survey who might not have been part of R3A, but that's okay. And then everyone in R3A, which is about 250 homes, also received a letter. And that letter included a link to the survey as well as information on this public hearing this evening. So they were notified that way. We also sent out a memo with those 10 potential zoning solution to single-family builders for comment in November. It was important to us to reach out to the building community because, you know, they're the ones who are designing and planning a lot of the actual homes that we see. And so we wanted to get an idea of all of these solutions' potential effectiveness and viability. And so that helped us edit down to our final couple of options as well. And on top of that, we also had an open house, both for residents and one for builders, November 25th. We ended up having a little bit of cross-pollination at the resident open house because a lot of our builders locally are also residents. And so they came to that meeting and we had a really great discussion with everybody. So after all of that engagement, we were able to take our number of proposed solutions from about 10 to about two solutions that we think will do a really good job of bringing the kinds of changes that people want to see without necessarily being overly restricted or heavy-handed on new home designs. To summarize before we get there, there were obviously, you know, with 87 survey responses and two open houses and a written public comments that we received, there's a lot to sift through. But these were the key takeaways. I wanted to make sure that the planning commission could ground themselves in as we talk about these options. Based on that visual preference survey, we saw that residents generally like homes that are a bit smaller. They appear charming. They have, you know, a green front yard. And then sort of the activity in the house is oriented towards the street. And it sort of de-emphasizes the garage and the driveway, as in these are not the dominating elements of the front of the house. Most residents also believe that elements like landscaping, setbacks, front doors, porches, and impervious surface are the items that are most important to consider when we're talking about what neighborhood character is, which can be a really vague phrase if we don't distill it down into those kinds of topics. But residents are split on a ton of other issues. There was a huge range of reactions to whether redevelopment is a positive thing. You know, there's a subset of the community that, you know, definitely feels a little apprehensive about change, but there's also a significant subset of the community that likes to see redevelopment and likes to see new houses and property values go up and overall change. Concerns about future impacts to properties. If, you know, if we're to do something that's more restrictive, what does that do to the value of my home when I sell it in a couple of years and it probably gets redeveloped? And then of course, you know, as always, discussions about what is the role of the city? Is it too heavy-handed to consider some of these regulations? Or is it the role of the city to step in and address some of these issues with, you know, a firm sort of outlook? But I think that one of the key survey responses to directly take away from is that one that's called out in the yellow box just there. And it's basically that we asked people, we asked all the survey respondents, you know, when the planning commission and the city council and staff look at all of the potential zoning solutions here, is it more important that we end up with a variety of new houses or that we end up with, you know, houses that look how we want them and that those houses look pretty uniform in the way that Wayzata houses should look? And the overwhelming majority prioritized variety. And so that informed a lot about how we thought about the overall restrictiveness or incentive-based nature of different solutions. So our first of two solutions has to do with what is actually a pretty minor thing in the code, but has a big effect on how lots are laid out in town. So right now, if you're building a new driveway on a property, you have to set that driveway off 10 feet from the side yard lot line. It gets pushed in towards the middle of the lot. And that's true in all of our residential zoning districts, and it's also true for curb cuts. So that entire area of pavement gets moved off significantly from that side lot line. We are proposing to reduce that from 10 feet down to three feet. That three-foot number was chosen because it feels like a practical amount of space for fencing, landscaping. It's enough space that property line disputes are a little less likely. It's enough room to put some snow clearance if that's what you want to do. You know, you don't have to, and when it comes to setbacks, nobody has to build out to the setback, but it's always likely that they will. So we want to make sure that we build in those sort of fail safes. But what that does is it opens up the side yard for driveways. So a lot of the lots in R3A are 50, 55, 60 feet wide. So instead of having to push a driveway all the way in 10 feet and then also, you know, put a house on the other side of that in order to sort of route your driveway all the way, all the way around the back of the house, now you can build that house out closer to the principal structure setback, which is 10 feet, and still have room around that to get that driveway maybe to the back. And, you know, this is again, you know, relaxing a setback doesn't make anyone build out to that, but providing that option is something that, based on the building permits we see come in and have to ask people to revise, that's an option that we think people would pursue a lot more often if given the opportunity to. Moving that driveway off to the side also means that it's no longer in the front yard quite as much. It might mean that someone has their garage a little bit further over, that sort of thing. The added bonus of this one is that it does bring some current non-conformities into compliance. So there's certainly older driveways throughout town that are right on the line or close to it. And instead of being, you know, incredibly non-conforming because they're way within that 10-foot setback, they're now a lot closer to being in conformance. So that's, that's more helpful to those property owners. And those three images on the bottom of the screen there are all existing houses in Wayzata that have that side driveway in the, in the setback. The other proposal is to increase the front yard setback, but only for garages. You know, there was a lot of discussion about front yard setbacks and in these neighborhoods, is there a historic front yard setback that we should be adhering to? We looked at the setbacks throughout the neighborhood and there is not one setback that we used to have and now we don't. There are plenty of houses in the 1920s and 30s that are at the 20 feet that we have today. There are houses in the, in the 40s, 50s, 70s that are 40, 50 feet back. So a huge variety. But what we did find is that, you know, that current principal structure setback of 20 feet is feeling close to the street for a lot of residents. But moving that entire setback further back is going to bring a lot of homes into that non-conformity state, which makes administration property changes a lot more difficult for those homeowners. However, that survey and those open houses did find that many residents would like to de-emphasize the garage specifically. It's not so much the house itself that they have a problem with, it's that garage being so dominant in front. And, you know, there are a couple of solutions we talked about for trying to bring back that garage, but a small additional setback of five feet seemed like a low-impact way to do that. So there are two impacts, you know, the two main impacts that that could have on a lot. You could either have, you know, most of your house at that minimum setback with the garage pushed back five feet, which is going to de-emphasize the garage. Or if it's really important to your design that the house, that the, you know, the garage and the front door are totally in line with each other, the whole house just moves back those five feet. So not a really restrictive, huge setback change. The lot depths in this area generally support it. If someone is in a unique condition, that's when we start talking about variances, if that becomes really tough to comply with. But again, not as intensive as those, as some previously proposed solutions. These are, these are tabled solutions. This is what you'll see a lot of information on in the packet. You know, they include additional design standards for single-family homes. This was one that administration was going to prove really difficult for, and again, wasn't really in line with that variety that people were looking for. A couple of other of these were ones that were good to talk about, but were not super realistic. I think that the one that got the most discussion, both among staff and among the community, was a potential impervious surface bonus for having your garage in the rear yard. And there's a public works comment in the staff report that goes into really good detail as to why that might not be the best practice at this time, but that, you know, if these, you know, two solutions that we're proposing today are not producing the kinds of variety that we're looking for, that could be something that we discuss a little bit more in the future. It's just because it can be such a slippery slope to start incentivizing thing, using impervious surface, that it's best that we at least wait on that, if not, you know, never do it. All that being said, happy to take questions for staff. And then after that, you'll have your discussion and make your motion to recommend approval or denial. Thank you.
Thank you Planner Quarles. I'll bring us back now to our commissioners. Do any one of us have questions for staff at this time?
I have one.
Okay.
I'm sure that there are other communities that have narrow lots like these, the ones that primarily are up in that R3A district. And I'm wondering if you've talked to any of them to find out if they've tried similar actions to try to alleviate the issues? And if they did, were these ones that tend to work? Did they find that there was any pushback or, or negative issues that occurred as a result of a side setback that was changed or not being able to have the garage exactly where you want it? Was there any problems that you came across?
I did not end up speaking specifically to other communities. I did research a couple of other ones. One of the things that comes up a lot in communities that have a really strong grid system, narrow lots, those standards sort of under a quarter acre lots, is that often they have alleyways in the back. And in one of the, I looked at Portland, Oregon as one example, they have, that's where that, the solution that we didn't end up bringing forward, that sort of maximum of percentage of the facade a garage can take up, that was from Portland's code. And part of the reason that works for them is that if you have to put the garage in the back, you can access it via an alleyway. And so a lot of the narrow lot solutions made a lot more sense in like an actual sort of urban core type neighborhood as opposed to the little bit more unique situation we have here, which is a strong grid up there, but not necessarily alleys to facilitate that rear of lot development. In terms of whether, you know, having garage, or having driveways closer to the side lot line is generally a problem, I think Planner's Weber can probably speak a little bit more to it, but it's not a significant problem in other communities until they actually start overlapping with each other. And then it's a little bit tougher to figure out stuff like property lines and fencing and that sort of thing. But we still have that setback of three feet.
So in communities like Richfield or Bloomington or other, even the city, this must have come up, you know, closer to home in Minnesota, but you don't know of any other actions that they may have taken.
I think that the key thing to consider there is that our 10-foot setback for side yard driveways is pretty restrictive when compared to those cities. I don't think they necessarily had to make a conscious choice to really relax it down as much as we are. They've already been in that condition of having driveways a little closer.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, if I may just add, I think Planner Quarles answered it very accurately. The alleys are implemented in many of the cities that you listed. The other thing we both heard from the building community as well as my past experience in other communities is often it's addressed through a PUD where that particular subdivision may be requesting something unique and there's a specific essentially zoning district created for that. So we, we are kind of unique in that these are, you know, pre-platted lots that don't have alleys a lot of times, not always, but because of tree cover or topography that we, we don't have those same alleys. So it's not, it wasn't, it's not easy to look at another community that is in the exact same situation we are, particularly that many of the communities that are more of our, you know, our cohorts do this through a PUD, which wouldn't work going back through existing lots to do that.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Consultants Weber, what are, just, I was looking at the proposed text and what are the current driveway setbacks in all of our residential districts? Is it 10 feet?
That is correct. It's 10 feet.
And so, and what we're proposing is to not just R3 and R3A, but for all of our residential districts to move it to three feet?
No.
Because that's how I read the text.
It's specific, it's all of the residential district except for R5, which is our multifamily district. And that's primarily because those buildings tend to be, because of their size, tend to make, need that sort of commercial buffer of parking between, between properties.
So have we done any like analysis on what, on how that impacts some of the other residential districts besides R3? Because previously our discussion had really been constrained to R3, right?
Yeah. And I can speak to that a little bit more. Our R4 and R4A districts are a little bit more dense than R3, the R3s, but they're actually primarily for more townhouses and closer knit areas so that relaxing that driveway is going to help those properties, especially moving forward into the future when we're looking at townhouses that might have closer driveways to each other, which will mimic conditions that we have in some of our townhouse divisions that are PUDs, like Planner's Weber was talking about. When it comes to the districts that are less dense than R3A, so R1, R2, that's not going to make too much of a difference because those lot front edge minimums are much larger. So for instance, in R1A, you know, the minimum lot width is 200 feet. So a difference of seven feet is not going to make a major difference in those areas because it's unlikely that people are putting their driveways very close to another anyway. It's just something that we've processed variances for over the years. And in those discussions, it's been sort of like, what are we doing in terms of talking about the actual practical impact that that has on the neighborhood?
Okay.
Yeah. So the reason for making it applicable to all of them, with one exception, is that that will keep them from having to get PUDs? Did I understand that right or did I?
I think that the, the PUD issue came up just because when you see closer side, closer side yard driveways in other locations throughout town, it's probably because they got a PUD. The main reason behind including those other zoning districts is that it's, it was kind of hard to find a reason not to include them in general. It's a, it's a good change to make in this district and relaxing it a little bit in the other districts didn't really have an appreciable harm. So other than having R5 stay at that 10 feet.
And you don't see a problem with neighbors being too close together with someone's driveway being three feet from someone's property line?
I personally don't. And I know that in a couple of, especially throughout R1, there's a couple driveways that just cross other properties. So it's not that those conditions don't necessarily happen occasionally, but three feet feels like a reasonable buffer to give yourself the room you need for logistics.
Yeah, we, we could give you quite a few examples, particularly in the R1A, the largest of the lots, that for topography or wetlands or other reasons, you know, the lot lines might look normal, but where the driveways are certainly have a wide variety. Doesn't change where the house is located. Just changes how you access the street.
Just trying to anticipate if it could be a problem, you know, like somebody uses their driveway as parking lot, you know? That the neighbors might not be fond of that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing for 5B, which is considering the text amendment to Chapter 955, which is the R3A District and 920 Parking. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward, if you do, please state your name and address.
Chair Planton, my name is Dan Gustafson, 1040 East Circle Drive, Wayzata. Val and I have talked about my property many times over the years. I've had many conversations with her predecessors as well. We own a two-unit home in a single-family neighborhood, if that makes any sense. While the use is allowed, the area for our lot is smaller than is what is required today, which makes it legal non-conforming. Over the years, we have discussed with the city of Wayzata rebuilding that two-unit property under the conditional use permit that was granted in 1978. It's been, it's been filed at the county. And so in hearing that the city of Wayzata is not interested or is trying to minimize garages and driveways, our, our home is nothing but garage and driveway as you stand in the, in the street and look at it. And we want to make sure, my wife and my family and I want to make sure that when the opportunity presents itself to rebuild that structure, that these changes that are being proposed don't have a negative impact on our ability to have garages and driveways be part of the fabric of our community. And Val and I were discussing our last conversation and she and I didn't remember it exactly the same as you might imagine. And so we, we probably will be talking in the next couple of days. But I just simply wanted to point out that there are many two-unit properties in Wayzata and they represent a unique opportunity for redevelopment and an opportunity to upgrade housing stock and fit in line with much of what has occurred on Rice Street and under Steve Bowles redevelopment around town. And just, please don't shortchange us as we sit on the most valuable piece of property that we own and you contemplate these changes.
May I ask a question? Thank you. Yes.
I'd like to ask you a question, sir.
Go ahead.
So your concern is that your two-family structure has primarily the garage in the front.
And driveway.
And the driveway in the, in the front. And you're concerned that if this passes, that you won't be able to rebuild that in the same way?
Potentially. I, I just want to get clarification. I don't quite understand everything that's going on there because there's been so much that's been proposed over the last little bit. I admit that. And I, to be candid, I, I read a lot of city council packets and planning commissions and don't fully understand what's happening there. There's a lot of sketches, a lot of ideas. So I just more being protective of our interest in coming forward and.
So as it is written, this would be a problem for you?
Well, the, the structure, our structure right now is within the, is within the, would be within the 25-foot proposed setback.
Okay.
Would be one potential downfall. And I'm not sure how many two-unit structures the city has considered as they contemplate those, those setbacks and these kinds of things.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gustafson.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? All right. Planner Quarles, anyone online?
I have a few people watching, but no one who's indicated they'd like to speak.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing on, sorry, on the text amendment for Chapter 955, R3A District and 920 Parking, and bring it back to the commissioners for Any comments? Is it possible?
I would just, if I can, I would just comment to your question to our citizen. A little hard to know exactly how it would impact them until they present plans and go to design steps. But what, what it says to me is if there were two, if they tore down a two-unit structure and wanted to build another two-unit structure, you'd end up, they'd probably be required to have a driveway on each side. They'd be able to go to three feet on each side. And garage would be five feet further back than the front. So instead of maybe right now having two garages in the middle, I don't know what it looks like with doors on the sides and the driveways in the middle, it would end up having to look different with the home in the middle, garages on the sides. And, you know, and they could go up to three feet. you know, and they could go up to 3 feet to the border. That's just speculation, but we can't really answer those questions.
Yeah, because we don't really know how wide his lot is.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask the city that question. What, do you see a potential problem for people who are in Mr. Gustafson's situation?
I think that, I think that speculating on specific properties is maybe not the role of, of this meeting today. I know that Mr. Gustafson and I have talked before about his property, but in general, the driveway regulation is meant to be an expansion of what people are allowed to do, rather than...
A what?
An expansion of what people are allowed to do, rather than a restriction, and that the garage setback is going to be, I would think, tackled on a property-by-property basis.
Any comments? No?
Good, thank you.
Okay. All right, anybody else? You mean before we vote, or? Yes.
Yeah.
Everybody's, all right. Okay, go ahead. I'm thinking. Okay. Might have another...
Actually...
No, short of that, oh, go ahead.
Just a question for Consultants Weber and Planner Quarles, just in terms of, like, the, the language around driveway cut, right? And is that really just the curb, or the curb cut, sorry, I think it's referred to? Is that really just saying that the curb cut can also be 3 feet off the property line?
Yes.
For areas where there's curb, because there aren't a lot of curbs.
Yeah, so curb cut is any place where the driveway comes and meets the street.
Okay.
And, yes, so our original red line was actually just moving the driveway, and then Public Works pointed out to us that they'd also be open to moving the curb cut as well. So, you don't have to have an S curve in your driveway to, to make that happen.
I have one other comment. Okay.
Thank you.
It seems that this is, from the discussion we had in the workshop, that this is a pretty measured approach compared to all of the things that we talked about that could possibly be done, that would be the least disruptive to builders and, and new homeowners who want to build there. The thing that you always have to consider is that styles, colors, designs change over time, every generation or so, and there's always going to be people who like or don't like a particular architectural choice. We just don't want to get in the way of that, because that's, you know, freedom to express yourself and how your house looks. So, these seem to be, like I said, very measured approaches, and do not seem to conflict with anything, as I look through land use, is it, will it be a positive effect on the area? Yeah, I think it would, and I don't think it would negatively impact property values, maybe just the opposite. So, in, in terms of what we're looking at here, I, I don't see a problem. So, I don't have an objection. Okay. Um, thank you. I'd like to thank staff for initiating that survey and getting such a great response, having open houses, and getting and summarizing all that feedback. I think it's really important for all of us, and it was great to have the community so involved. I mean, that's how this process should work, so, nice job on that. I think these, this isn't overarching or overstepping anything. I think it supports a creative use in the neighborhoods. It's not wide sweeping, allows for flexibility, and does not negatively impact home values as a first step. So, I, I'm in favor of the amendment, and I didn't know of any other comments. Well, then, at this time, I'd like to see if any commissioner would like to make a motion? Oh, yeah, there's that.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to prepare a draft planning commission report and recommendation with appropriate findings reflecting a recommendation to approve on the, approve on the application for review and adoption at the next planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Al. May I have a second? Second? Thank you, Commissioner. Yes. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Please note the motion passes. Now, we'll move on to 5A, which is considering the text amendment for Chapter 909, the design standards. Planner Quarles, would you like to provide an update?
Happy to. This will be a slightly longer, slightly longer update, it's a little bit, a little bit more, a little bit more detailed. So, this is a series of updates to our Design Standards chapter, which is chapter, oh, it's 909, so ignore the title of this, it should be Chapter 909. First in background, we had a, we've had design standards for a long time, but we had a really major rewrite in 2021 as one of the first items in the zoning study. Since then, we've used them on many new projects throughout town, some multifamily, commercial, mixed-use, really wide variety. The list of updates that we're proposing here are really meant to address common questions, either that come up for applicants, or questions that staff has to find themselves asking a lot and reanswering as we go, and in general, just to improve administrative efficiency. The planning commission reviewed a draft of these changes at the November 18th workshop, and provided some really strong feedback that we were able to integrate into this current draft of changes. And then, just as a note, for the R3A changes, we notified all of those property owners specifically. These changes did not require a specific neighborhood notification, because they're citywide, so it got its standard notification in newspaper, and what we typically do in the Wayzata Weekly as well. So, to go right into it, there's a couple of categories, but the first is massing breaks. So, on each of these slides, the actual red line is up on the top of this slide, and I don't necessarily need to read every one of those each time, and then the explanation is just below. So, for these ones, for this one, it's adding some clarification to development that is located between Lake Street and Lake Minnetonka, which is not too many properties. The idea here, by adding the words pedestrian, and where possible, is to provide more consideration for those parcels south of Lake Street, where a massing break may not provide the things that we're looking for, which is, you know, particularly, specifically a view of Lake Minnetonka in some places. That might be because the elevation is not favorable to it, there might be a building in the way, something like that. So, the idea behind adding those changes is to make it a little bit easier for applicants to have that discussion with the city about what massing breaks need to facilitate what purpose. Upper-story step backs, so in, in every Design Standards district, buildings over a certain number of stories need to, what we call, step back their uppermost story, and the idea is to, you know, provide for more light, and to come down to the street, and also to feel a little bit more pedestrian scale on the streets, you're not looking straight up at the entire height of a tall building, it steps back, and you can't see the uppermost floor. So, the previous regulation, you know, it depended on the district, but generally, and Wayzata Boulevard is a key one, that was always noted as the uppermost step, uppermost story would need to step back, and we always treated that as the third story. We realized in administering it that this wasn't always clear about whether the uppermost story could be the second story, if it needed to step back immediately after the first story. Now, that wasn't the intent of the Design Standards, so we wanted to make sure that we clarified that by saying that those two-story buildings are not required to have a step back. When we brought this to the planning commission meeting, the workshop in November, the feedback that we heard was that it shouldn't just be, you know, the uppermost story that should be stepped back, we should be very specific to us to saying it should start at the third floor, because the previous discussion behind saying the word uppermost was to provide for, you know, say we have a four-story building on Wayzata Boulevard someday, that that would start at the fourth floor. So, based on planning commission feedback, we changed that to the third floor, which is now the case across all of the Design Standards districts, is that it starts at the third floor. Rooftop equipment is something that we've always had to take a really, a really fine eye in administering. The idea behind these changes, and so we've got, coming up here, we've got rooftop equipment in the Lake Street and Bluff districts, rooftop equipment on Wayzata Boulevard, and then some other changes regarding how we treat rooftop equipment deviations. These first couple of red lines are designed to provide for, so, let me back up a little bit. On Lake Street, you're not allowed to have rooftop equipment at all. The idea being that if you are up the hill somewhere in the Bluff district, or anywhere else, you should be able to look down, out upon the lake, and not have to see some sort of, you know, smokestack or vent, or something like that on the roof. So, we don't allow equipment on the roof. The question for builders then becomes, okay, where do I put that then? If I can't have those venting things on the roof, where do I put them? What that's led to is some really creative solutions involving, you know, HVAC units in parking garages, or tucked into second floors, or all these sorts of things. But one solution that comes up fairly frequently now is the idea of having sort of a notch cut out in a building, basically saying, I'm going to use a little bit of my upper floor, enclose it, make it look like the massing is part of the building, but actually have my mechanical equipment in there. So, if you were looking down on it, you would be able to see it, however, it wouldn't be coming up and obstructing your view of Lake Minnetonka, it would just be sort of within your eye line without obstructing. So, because we've noticed that that solution is favorable to people, or rather, not, you know, producing a huge issue in the community, we decided we wanted to be a little bit more specific with it, within the code, and also add a little bit of language to saying, you know, the most important thing for mechanical equipment visibility in general has to do with that street-level view as well, and so that applies to all of the districts. We did update this one a little bit, based on planning commission feedback on that workshop as well. There was a minor code change that basically said, okay, if it's not on the roof and it's not on the ground, where is it? So, we made that change as well. On Wayzata Boulevard, you are allowed to have rooftop equipment, but we were very restrictive as to how large it could be. Previously, we said it could be 3 feet tall and 9 square feet in area, which is about a 3x3 square, which is really just about a, like a residential air conditioner, like very small. What we noticed, based on specifically mechanical deviations that came through, if you go back and look at the Wells Fargo mechanical deviation discussion, this was a big part of this, what we're proposing to allow is expand the allowed size of mechanical equipment, no larger than any other mechanical equipment allowed in town, which is 5 feet, but again, double down on, and this will come up in the next slide, that the most important thing is that it's not visible from the street. We're okay if you have a larger unit, we get that for these bigger commercial buildings, you need a larger HVAC unit, it's not practical to have tons of small HVAC units scattered about the roof, and in some cases, it's not practical to put that on the ground, which is another allowed place that it is. In the case of the Wells Fargo discussion, part of the issue with putting it on the ground was that every side of the building faces a public right-of-way, and so, since there was this hidden place to put it up on the roof, it makes sense to allow that condition in a couple more places. So, the area of individual mechanical equipment units is now not restrained anymore, however, you still can't take up more than 25% of the roof, and that's a pre-existing regulation that we felt it was reasonable to keep in. This is that note I mentioned earlier, this is mirrored in that Lake Street area. Again, it's basically saying that notch approach is also okay here, and that the most important thing is that it's not visible from the street at the end of the day. I mentioned rooftop deviations. We have a list at the end of the Design Standards that notes all of the sections that are eligible for minor deviations. A minor deviation is one that the planning commission doesn't have to look at, it's for stuff like materials changes, if someone wants to use a different type of brick, or, you know, if someone wants to provide a different number of spaces of bicycle parking, that's something that staff can administratively look at. But we noticed that mechanical deviations were also on that list, and this was, this is interesting to see, because this is typically something we want to talk about, because the condition of height and of roofs in this town is generally very important, we've noted in the past. And we've, for that reason, we've preferred to review those deviations with the planning commission and the city council. Now, combined with the other changes that we're proposing, we're allowing larger mechanical equipment, taking this off of the minor list, and making it a major deviation, like most other things, means that really only the biggest changes are the ones that are going to come in front of planning commission and city council. It really has to be a lot of mechanical equipment to warrant this review, and we think that that makes sense, based on the deviation discussions that we had for other buildings that proposed oversized mechanical equipment. And that's that one. For, I also mentioned appeals being one of the things that we looked at. Right now, if someone has an issue with a determination that the zoning administrator has made in the city, the default process is to go through the variance process, and this makes sense for the rest of the zoning code. However, in Design Standards, we have a major deviation process and a specific set of criteria for that. So, all we wanted to build in was to say, you know, when it comes to these minor deviations, staff makes a determination saying, yes, we approve it under the criteria, or no, we don't approve it under the criteria, and we wanted to make sure that if an applicant wanted to appeal that decision from staff, that it would go through the deviation process, and not the variance process, so that it would come back in front of planning commission and council with Design Standards criteria, and not variance criteria. And then, our last ones are very small, one of them is a typo, this type of lighting we were asking for was virtually impossible, and then the other, which is actually kind of a bulk of the red lines, is we've got some changes to masonry that are just more in line with the market and current building codes, and how masonry, how masonry works, and I'll note that those ones were specifically drafted by our city architect, so I will try my best to answer questions on them if you have them, but I am not the expert in that area. So, similar to our last presentation, questions, public hearing, which I neglected to include, discussion and motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Planner Quarles. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time? Take this as a no?
I can go back to any slide, I know it's pretty dense.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing portion of the meeting for Agenda Item 5A, considering a zoning text amendment for Chapter 909, Design Standards. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to jump up? Seeing none, all right. Planner Quarles, is there anyone online?
No one who's indicated they'd like to speak.
All right. Then, I will close the public hearing portion of this Agenda Item 5A, and bring it back to the commissioners for conversation and discussion. Anyone have any comments?
I think, I think, well, you all did a great job, I wasn't at the workshop, I wish I had been, it sounded interesting, and staff has done an excellent job. I really think this clarifies things, makes things more precise in terms of what's allowed and what's not, eliminates any inconsistencies, so I think it's well done.
Well, as I read it, it's, it's very in line with that discussion we had at that workshop, I mean, almost right down, all right down the line, so I have no objections to it at all.
Thank you for your time in the workshop two weeks ago, and performing all this together. Appreciate it.
Yep. Agreed. Especially like that these minor deviations won't fall under the variances category now, it makes it much easier for applicants, and for staff, and for everyone, so I think, job well done. All right. With those comments, may I have a motion?
Yes.
Oh, yay, okay.
Go. Yes, you may.
Yes.
Motion to, motion to approve, motion to direct staff to prepare and draft of the planning commission report and recommendation with appropriate findings, reflecting a recommendation of approval of, on the application, or review and adoption at the next planning commission meeting.
You nailed it. May I have a second?
Second.
I can read.
Any comments? No? All right. May we take a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So, we get to move on to other items.
Vice Chair, regarding the development activities, probably the, the biggest development happening in the city is the redevelopment of the former Wells Fargo. The, you know, that was a three-phase redevelopment, the Wells Fargo and the office building are now occupied. Regarding the former building that will turn into apartments and townhouses, the demolition is substantially complete. Next will be installation of the underground parking, and then the construction of the building over that. You may also notice it's... You may also notice it's more redevelopment activity than development activity. The gas station has been torn down. We've been discussing with the developer a potential redevelopment activity. They have not submitted their application yet, but that's something that we likely will have in the planning commission in the near future. And then, we're also talking with a number of other developers. But a couple of updates. Moments of Wayzata, we're currently negotiating that development agreement. We've previously approved the development agreement for 201 Lake Street. So, now, they're revising or getting ready to submit their building permit. They have discussed possible demolition here this winter, but they'll wait for construction till spring. And then, other development applications that we have in that we're reviewing but are not deemed complete yet is 200 Lake Street. And then, we've met with the developer from Ferndale Bluffs that they are preparing their resubmital, which is expected this week. So, activities you'll see down the line. Any questions regarding development?
I thought I saw either new application, the memory care facility on Wayzata Boulevard, past east of Crosby. I thought there was a submittal for a name change and... Is there anything happening there?
For formerly Cantissimo, now Harbors of Wayzata. Yep. So, they're, I don't know how I would characterize it exactly, but they're, they've gone, they've gotten their approvals from planning commission and from city council. It's just about next steps for them. So, we'll have an update for you when we have one.
I have one question. It isn't really about Wayzata, but Minnetonka. Just a question, if you happen to know what's going on. I just noticed a big pile of dirt at the nursing home. What is it called? Ridge Crest? Ridge Crest?
Hillcrest.
Hillcrest.
The one right on Wayzata Boulevard.
Yep. So, they're replacing that with another memory care facility. And I know that City of Minnetonka on their website has a really good development page for it with all of the background that's led to that.
But a memory care place.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Planning commission meeting schedule, 2025?
2025? I think our only, you know, our next meeting is going to be January 6th in the new year. And then, you know, I don't know if we're going to plan any sort of celebration, but I think it's going to be, what, 65 years of the planning commission? If my math is correct. I noticed that a couple of months ago when I was in the archives. So, I don't know, maybe we'll bring cupcakes or something, but we'll see.
65 years. That's a big number. Sounds like something to celebrate. All right. Well, we, comes to a close here. May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
May I have a second? Any conversations or discussions? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.